Um, hi, um, well, let's, let's get this party started. My name is Phil Dwight and the city councillor Barge, who is the presiding officer of legislative matters, which you are attending right now is a joint meeting of the North Hampton Planning Board and the Legislative Matters Committee of North Hampton City Council, purpose of which to hold a joint hearing that we'll get to in a moment, if you can bear with us. And first of all, condolences to all your people who live and die on Facebook or Instagram. I'm sorry. That will just give you more opportunity to devote your attentions to us. Uh, this first off, I'll let you know that this meeting is being audio and video recorded via the miracle of Zoom. And that's the purpose of letting you know that is informed consent. If you don't want to be seen, don't turn on your camera. If you don't want to be heard, don't turn on your microphone. What will actually, um, so Laura, are you able to call a role for both committees?
Yes, I am. Okay.
Sure. Councillor Dwight.
I'm here.
Councillor Shara.
Uh-oh.
Oh, she's.
No, I'm here. Sorry. Here, here.
Um, councillor Maori.
Here.
And councillor Thorpe.
Here.
And then, uh, member Cohout. I know he's there.
Here. He's here. Yes, water.
Member Elkins. Uh, not present?
I don't see.
Okay. Um, member Coryat.
Here.
Member Fowler.
Here.
Oh, was member Elkins there?
I see member Elkins' image on here, but.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll see. I'm sorry, continue.
I'm sorry, member Fowler died.
Yep, here.
Okay. Member Grenat. Not present perhaps? Uh, member Tate.
Here.
Member Taylor.
Here.
Member White.
Here.
And member White Hill.
Here.
All right. We definitely have quorum both bodies. Thank you all. Uh, please mark, uh, member Elkins as present.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Dwight, can I ask a point of order that I'm at the risk of annoying a bunch of people? I'm just looking on the city calendar and I don't see this. I see this posted as legislative matters, but I don't see planning.
You don't see it posted as a joint hearing?
Yeah, it's posted as a joint hearing, so I didn't put a separate posting for the planning board.
Oh, I see. So if you open the agenda, it says it at the top, but it doesn't say it on the calendar. Is that, and so that's okay, Carolyn?
Um. It was also advertised that way. Yeah.
And it was advertised as well?
Yes, it was advertised as a joint hearing. Yeah.
Okay. Carry on, sorry.
No, that's a reasonable question.
And it's in the agenda center as a joint hearing, but I'm.
It's funny that it doesn't translate onto the calendar, is that? All right.
Talk, we'll have a talk with Civic Plus, we'll have a stern talking to them. Um, so let me say, if there, this, as you say, is a public hearing. Um, but we will start with public comment and just to let you know, I'm doing this through an iPad, iPad, so I can't see all your raised hands. So if you're, if there's thousands of people wishing to talk, please indicate on your respective device wherever Zoom has hidden the raised hand feature. Do it that way, because you may raise your hand on the screen and I might not have you on my screen here, so.
Councillor Dwight, just a point of, uh, or, uh, clarification.
Information.
Information, point of information. If you would like to see the subtitles, you can go to more on the dot, dot, dot in your lower right-hand screen and hit more, and then it will say show subtitles if any of the public commenters, if there are any need to need that closed caption option.
So this is public comment. Um, also let you know that when we, uh, when we open the hearing, this, I mean, you're welcome to speak to the item that the most, the principal item on our agenda here, so, um, just think public comment might be moot at that point. But if you have some other comments that you want to make relative to planning into legislative matters affairs, um, you feel free to come, uh, raise your hand now and you can comment. I'm not seeing anything as I scroll through the screen. All right. Well, then let's get to it. This is, uh, this is a public hearing and, uh, this is by Matt, in accordance with Mass General Law, uh, this was advertised as such and that an opportunity for people to speak to the item before us, which is an amendment of the, uh, section three fifty dash three point four zoning map that additional smart growth overlay district and overlaying on the existing urban residential B, U R B, AKA U R B, uh, District at Chapel Street. Um, and I'd accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Move to open the hearing?
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Shara made the motion and I believe that was councillor Thorpe seconding.
Correct.
Okay, Laura, would you call a role for the vote on opening the public hearing?
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Maori.
Yes.
And councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Did I continue and call the role of planning?
Would you please?
Sure. Um, member Cohout.
Yes.
Member Elkins.
Yes.
Member Coryat.
Yes.
Member Fowler.
Yes.
Member Tate.
Yes.
Member Taylor.
Yes.
Member White.
Yes.
And member White Hill.
Yes.
Okay. We are, the public hearing is assembled and for folks, um, the normal process is to hear from proponents and then, uh, after that, opponents or people who are neutral. But in this case, I think, given, um, given the absence of evidence of people here to discuss it, I would, uh, I would ask that first, uh, staff member, the staff for planning department, Carolyn Mish is here, and Carolyn, if you could just lay out in accessible layman terms as to what it is where it'd be.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Good afternoon, early evening. Um, I, I think it'll be helpful to, um, share my screen. So if that's okay, I'll just put the map up. I know several members probably already have this in front of them, but, um, I'll go ahead and do that. Can you see the ordinance amendment, um, with the map on it in front of you? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, and, and I have a, um, sort of a pull-out, a zoomed-out map, um, below this, but just to, um, show you, and actually I think I'm going to move down, um, to the next screen, um, might be easier to see. But what we're talking about is, um, what we refer to as a smart growth overlay, which is under, um, Mass General Law, Chapter forty R. And it's a separate piece or outside of zoning, um, that is an incentive designation by the, the state set up this type of zoning for municipalities to adopt in, um, areas where there's accessible modes of transportation and in urban centers or accessible by walking or other modes. The idea of setting up this smart growth, these smart growth districts across the Commonwealth was actually an incentive for developing housing. And the incentive is that if communities are approved or adopt these districts that have to fit very specific parameters that are established by the state, then, and then housing, affordable housing is subsequently built, um, within these districts. There is a pot of money that, um, cities can access, um, for each unit that's developed. There's an incentive zoning. Once you pass the zoning, there's a pot of money that, that you get from the state. And then if housing units are actually built, you get, um, another, um, amount of money from the state for each unit to sort of offset the impacts of, of potentially, um, higher density developments within communities. So you all have seen this in the past. The first smart growth overlay was actually, um, also proposed at the state hospital. It was the first one in the city that we did, um, maybe eight years ago. And so if you see this yellow-green boundary here in the middle of the screen, which is sort of the very middle of the state hospital, and then the blue, um, linear boundary to the, um, east of that, those were the first two smart growth overlay districts that the city adopted. The state approved them. Um, we received, um, a bonus payment from the state for establishing the zoning district. And then, as the units were built out in, um, in these areas, the city received funding and that funding has actually gone to traffic mitigation and actually all of it has gone into the Main Street design process. That's what's allowed us to start this process of rethinking and redesigning Main Street to make it safer for pedestrians, the bicycles and ser- people of in, um, with all different, um, abilities and capacities. So, we've already taken advantage of the zoning by the state. Um, we've also expanded it to another area a couple of years ago off of Bridge Street, which, um, was, um, uh, came in as a project for, um, Valley CDC was redoing an SRO, um, project down off of Bridge Street. And so we created a smart growth overlay for that, property, um, which also resulted in payments to the city for those units that were created. The reason why, um, this, um, is overlay is different from our other zoning is because it allows much higher density than the underlying zoning would allow. And that's the whole goal from the state's purposes. State's point of view is they really want cities to start, um, creating housing to meet the demands of the Commonwealth. So we've already got a smart growth overlay at the state hospital. And what we're proposing is to add this, um, dashed purple rectangular parcel to the, on the lower left of this screen. That's about 1.1 acres of land that was previously, um, allocated as part of the state hospital redevelopment was allocated for a fire station. Um, twenty years ago, this city was concerned that as the state hospital built out, we might want to have a fire station located there to address the higher, um, sort of the shift in, um, population in this portion of the city. But as time went on, we, um, realized that we didn't want, there were no plans and there are no need to build a new fire station. And so this, uh, property essentially is, um, surplus for the purposes of a fire station. So we're looking at, um, uh, opportunities to create more affordable housing. Um, and we think that it makes sense to increase the allowable density right there, sort of at the edge of the state hospital, um, and also potentially get, um, state incentive payments for each unit that is built. Um, if the city adopts the zoning, it doesn't necessarily mean that an applicant would come forward and use that, but it's another tool to, um, help that if the zoning, if the units are going to be built there anyway, then why not have them, um, give back to the city as much as the state is willing to do that? And so you'll see also there's another purple outline on Laurel Street. That's a parcel that was rezoned, smart growth overlay C as well, a couple of years ago. And Valley CDC is working on, um, designing a project there for affordable housing units. And so as a, if this is adopted, then there'll be, in total, at the state hospital, there'll sort of be four, what we're referring to as sub smart growth districts. Um, so I think I'll leave it at that and, and please feel free to ask questions, to fill in any gaps that I may have missed.
Um, so we're at the question part and Karen, can you give me the screen back so I can see if someone's got their hands or anything? Uh, are there any questions? From any of the members? We have somebody?
I see a raised hand, uh, member White Hill.
Okay, member White Hill, sorry.
No problem.
I just found you.
Carolyn, can you just, I don't know if, if it's simple or not, but can you just say like, what is the underlying dwelling units per acre or however you want to term it, um, with the underlying zoning is existing and what would be allowed under the, rezoning? I know that might be a little bit tricky to quantify, but I know we have had some changes to the underlying zoning in some places. So there might be some confusion about what's allowed under those circumstances.
Yep. So, um, we actually had to do this calculation for, um, for the state to, so we have to do a spreadsheet to the state to prove that this, um, overlay actually increases the capacity. And it's really about by right units. It's not about special permits, because they're going to assume anything that requires a special permit is, um, is not an allowed use. So without any kind of additional special permits, you could do, we figured you could do seven single-family detached house lots, because there's so much frontage in this, on, on this parcel. So you could divide them up into fifty-foot, um, lots. And so if you could do seven units and then you could do actually two units for each of those parcels. So we're assuming sort of fourteen units by right, um, could be built. Because with, I mean, with the overlay, um, we calculated you could do about twenty-five units, I think, is the total number. And, and also to clarify, without this zoning change, anyone who's an affordable housing developer or actually anybody, but it's usually people who have expertise in this, could follow another state process under Chapter forty B, um, to build the same number of units and bypass the zoning. So, um, this forty R is sort of an easier path, because it's through the planning board and still gets you those additional density, that additional density, plus the city gets, uh, reimbursed for some of the housing units. Whereas under forty B, an applicant would go to the zoning board and ask for waivers from the zoning. And there's, you don't get the same density payments from the state.
So just, I'm going to repeat what I heard back and you just let me know if I'm wrong. It's fourteen units by right currently. Or it would be twenty-five under forty B currently, but with a whole process. Or we would go to forty R and it would still be forty R, it would be twenty-five units, but the city would get a payment, correct?
Correct.
And, but those twenty-five units, that, that is not a by right thing. That would be, that would have to go to the planning board, correct?
It's still a planning board review, but it's called a forty R process, which is parallel to a site plan review, which is still deemed to be an allowed by right use, but it still requires planning board review. So under forty R, a review for any number of units, um, is by the planning board. It's a public hearing. You look at all the technical details of the layout, the drainage, um, the access, lighting, landscaping, all of that is still performed. But it's, um, under this separate section that is, is basically the same as a site plan review.
Other question? Thank you, thank you. Sorry. Other questions?
Um, Bill, I have a question if the, uh, folks can hear me.
We can, George, go ahead.
Could we go back to the map, Carolyn?
Yep, let me just find where I put that. Boy. Hold on just a second, sorry. I think I have water in my line. Where did it go? Okay.
You can't get it.
Okay, okay, there. Can you see that, George?
I do. So as I understand it, we're, in, in this, uh, amendment, we're including, we're adding two parcels to the smart growth C overlay. One on, one on Chapel Street and one on Laurel Street, correct?
No, it's just the one that's dotted on the lower left. I was just referencing it, because there are three over, there are three sub-districts at the state hospital, A, B, and C. And the purple shows the C, and it's really about the total density and the unit mix. Is it, you know, single-family? Is it townhouse or is it multifamily type of zoning? But the purple dotted line on the lower left where the big purple arrow is, is the only parcel that's under consideration. And I just showed the other two purple, um, polygons, um, there just to show what's already a smart growth C sub-district at the state hospital.
Thank you. So the one on Chapel Street is being added.
Yes.
And is it currently part of that recreation field?
No, it was separated, it was created as a separate parcel for the purposes of a fire station. So when parcel C, the recreation field, were created, that did not include this piece.
Okay, thank you.
For, George, for context, um, you'll recall this, this site was being considered for a municipal dog kennel. And, uh, which was an allowed use under the existing, um, status. And, uh, in the course of the discussions, it was consensus of the neighborhood and, and I think of, of the mayor, among others, that this would be better used as an opportunity to expand our affordable housing. And I don't want to speak for anybody, but that was my understanding of how we got to where we are. Now we're obliged to, once again, go hat in hand with the state, subject to our approval, um, to see if, uh, to have the state allow us to change the designated use of this lot. And including this overlay. George, go ahead.
So given that, Bill, I guess I'm a little surprised that there's nobody from the neighborhood here, um, whereas they did come to the hearing about the dog kennel and quite some numbers. Um, but I guess they'd been notified. There was a yellow sign posted and maybe we'll see them at another juncture in this process.
Well, I can speak to that, George. Um, there was another juncture in this process. Uh, the Community Resources Committee had a, well, basically a de facto hearing without calling it a hearing and where, um, and, and councillor Foster can probably speak to this. I wasn't in attendance, but, um, the, uh, I guess, uh, ten to twelve, uh, folks from the neighborhood did come to speak to that. Which might account for their absence here today. I think they believe that they've already shared their opinions on that or gotten the question, the answers to their questions. Uh, we're satisfied and so that may be it. Councillor Foster, can you, uh, can you build on that?
I can build on that. Excuse my background. I don't mean to be a disembodied pet here. I'm just out in the rain. Um.
It's okay.
Yeah. And I do want to share just a little bit of context, both about, um, you know, sort of the neighborhood, um, reaction from the proposed municipal animal control facility to, to where we are now with thinking about, um, affordable housing. And, and it was like the, one of the major objections from the neighborhood regarding the proposed animal control facility was that this area on Chapel Street is, um, and it's just outside of the, you know, and it could be a, on sixty-six, um, you know, Rust Ave is, is a dead-end street. It's a little bit cut off chapel. There are, uh, density condos right across the street. Um, and so one of the things that was expressed during that meeting was a desire for more of a neighborhood feel. And so one of the objections, um, there, there were the proposed kennel would then be cutting land and people really expressed this desire. Yeah. Oh, can you hear me?
I'm sorry.
My video.
Yeah, you're, you're, yeah, it's a little, we're, we're probably about twelve seconds behind you and it is starting to freeze up a little bit, so.
Okay, is, is that a little bit better? Or no?
Hard to, hard to say. Go ahead and say stuff.
Okay, is that better?
Much better, much better.
Okay, great. All right. Combination of headphones and, and, um, low bandwidth. Um, so the neighborhood really expressed this desire for more of a neighborhood feel. And one of the concerns around the proposed dog kennel was that it would sort of really cut neighbors off from each other. And they expressed a desire for more housing, playgrounds, families to kind of bring more of a neighborhood feel, um, to that area. So that, that was one of the factors. And then at the meeting that the mayor came to, um, it was expressed a desire for more affordable housing. So, uh, that, that was something that the neighborhood expressed and is supportive. And councillor Dwight, as you mentioned, we did have an extensive meeting with Community Resources, um, where Carolyn Mish came and patiently answered a lot of questions. I reached out to people who would come to that meeting, um, and, uh, several weren't able to make it tonight. But also I think we're, we're seeing that many people have their questions answered.
Um, were there any objections or concerns that were expressed that remained?
Yes, um, the, the major concern that folks are going to have, um, is regarding the density. And I understand it's, it's not known, um, given, um, you know, the soil conditions and we haven't seen, um, uh, final plans yet. You know, but to sort of picture it, it's, it's a place that's known as, um, uh, Sunset Hill. I think it's, it's referred to. It's kind of a, a wide open field where you can see beautiful sunsets, um, backs up to Ellerbrook Field. So definitely that, that is a, a question or, or something that, um, the abutters will be following to the processes is understanding both that affordable housing comes with much higher density. And then, you know, that, the number of units is, is certainly something that, that will be a question or concern as, as it moves forward. But as far as the actual process, because, um, the twenty-five units would be allowed under, um, you know, our current affordable housing zoning, uh, versus changing this to allow for the state incentives, that technicality is, is not really the concern, that the bigger concern is, is moving forward, but it looks like.
Thank you very much. Um, anyone want to add to that or any one have any other questions? Um. Uh, any other comments? Neutral, negative, positive, otherwise? Well, it's just going to be really disappointing for you guys. It's going to be really brief hearing. I mean, don't want, don't want us to fluff, okay? I will accept the motion. Oh, yes. Um, I, I do have, it's slightly unrelated to this direct hearing. But one of the things that I'd love the city council to take a look at is really, um, is coming up with a number. I mean, I know that, that some of this estate is defined by the state, but like coming up with a number that is, you know, let's say four hundred thousand and below or three hundred and fifty thousand, whatever the number is, so that we actually, when we throw on this term affordable housing, we're not all just hearing with the term, the number that we all have in our own head. That, that's an excellent point. And in fact, actually, Karen, would you speak to the standards of affordability or even subsidized, uh, properties here?
Sure. And, um, and, uh, it's a changing number. But when we talk about affordable housing, and we've had several conversations over the last year about, um, the, all the different kinds of housing that we need in North Hampton, but affordable housing as defined in, throughout the Commonwealth and certainly in our zoning, is really housing that meets the, that is affordable, that it meets the needs of people who who are making 80% or less of the area median income. And what that means is dependent upon how big your household is. So there are different categories. So there's, the area median income is defined based on number of households contributing to that, to their income. So it's really a calculation based on, on, on that, the income streams. And so, but when we're talking about affordable housing in that context, it really is essentially subsidized affordable housing with state and federal subsidies and sometimes local subsidies. We've also talked about needing housing for people who are making more than that. So 100 to 175% of the area median income. And, you know, that though, that kind of housing is also that sort of more market rate housing, though, and is not subsidized by state and federal dollars. And so there is a difference. So we need, we do need to be careful about the terms that we use for this. But when we're talking about this zoning in particular and getting funding from the state, we're talking about housing that's going to be affordable, meaning people are not going to be paying more than 30% of their income towards housing. And they also have to be income eligible, meaning they can't make more than what's established as 80% of the area median income.
So what is the area, what's, what is there, what's 80% of the area income for a family of four?
I can look at, I think the last time I looked, it was about 77,000, but I'm not sure. I have the numbers. I'll have to look. But it obviously changes over time.
Of course.
And, and it's for the region. It's not just North Hampton. We're lumped in with, in the region with Springfield.
If I might, Carolyn, just so that Mr. Taylor has something to hang his hat on. I have this thing for the newspaper, the recently, the affordable housing up the last units built on the Village Hill, which I think are called North Commons, put out a big flyer regarding applications for that. So they listed out a chart of the different medians. So for a family of three, 60% of the area median income is 45,000. For a family of four, it would be, you need, a maximum income would be 50,000. Family of five, you're up to 54,000. So these are, as Carolyn said, they change quite often. But at this point in time, you know, there is, there's some really accessible charts that show those differences. It's not a lot of money.
I guess, I, I think it's just helpful that regardless of, I'm not even looking for exact numbers. I just think that it's helpful that we are all, we are all imagining the same, the same number.
You make, you make an excellent point, Sam, and it's one that I brought up before, is that affordable, this is like a Rorschach test for a lot of people. That it depends whatever they project on it. But there, there are actual criteria that define what affordable is. And there are actual criteria for qualification for subsidies and also for occupying these properties that would be developed. So that's, I appreciate you making that distinction because we've all been part of these debates and arguments when community members react to, in some cases, their sense of what the word affordable means and may be completely wrong.
And Laura Baker just put a number in the chat box for what currently for a family of four is 68,700, I believe she said. For a household of, a family of four is the 80% threshold. So 67,300. And again, and, and George raised another point too, is different, different developments are targeting different categories. So there's a 60%, there's a 50%, 60, 80, and even then there's sort of back on the other end too. So each of those is going to have a different number.
That's great. I, I just think that, you know, as long, just like we've talked about before, as long as we just say for purposes of, of everyone being on the same page, just think of this as $70,000 for, for a family of four. And as our numbers aren't exact, it's just, so we're all are thinking about the same number.
Right.
Good point. Other comments, questions? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
Well, I'm asking for you to, I, I can't give a motion because I'm presiding. So if you want to be
Move to close the public comment.
Okay, and is there a second? Who's second?
Council Mayor.
Okay, Council Mayor, all right. So Member Taylor made the motion. Council Mayor is second. Okay. Laura, would you please call the roll on closing the public hearing?
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Sherri.
So Sherri texted me that she is having difficulties with her, with the internet. She's having, apparently waters move further down State Street.
State Street.
All right. Council Maori.
Yes.
Okay, and Council Thorpe.
Yes.
Get up, Member Kohout.
Yes.
Member Elkins.
Yes.
Member Coriat.
Yes.
Member Fowler.
Yes.
Member Taylor.
Yes.
Member Tate.
Yes.
Member White.
Yes.
And Member Whitehill.
Yes.
Okay, so the hearing is closed. Now, here's a question for George or for Carolyn or for whomever. I don't know if you guys have an agenda beyond this. We're, the legislative matter says a couple of other items to deal with, including voting on our minutes and so on. I don't know, I mean, I don't want to make you suffer through that, but do you guys have a recommendation that you're required to vote on or what?
I, I would say that, yes, traditionally, something like this, Planning Board makes a motion to recommend the zoning amendment up to the council after this discussion. So we would entertain a motion for that if anybody has the agenda before then.
So I, for this, for the, this part of our show, I'm seating over, uh, chairing to George, so that he can preside over.
And to answer the second part of your question, Bill, no, there's, the planning board doesn't have any other items beyond this. So we'll be, we'll be turning off our Zoom as soon as we, as soon as we have a recommendation.
Well, if you want, as I said, there's no Facebook or Instagram. There's not anything left to do on the planet. So staying here would be perfectly fine. But go ahead. Have at it.
So George, I would move, I would move that we, that the Planning Board rec, vote to recommend MGL Chapter 48, Section 5, oh no, that's wrong. Amend the zoning map, Section 353.4 at Chapel Street, referred to community to as recommended here in the meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I can.
Second.
Okay, we'll take Jana as the second. I'm not sure who the other voice was. So the motion's made by Melissa and seconded by Jana. Any discussion? Okay, so we'll move forward with a voice vote and Laura, I'll take that off your hands. I'll do that for you. Okay? Marissa? How do you vote? Okay, Melissa, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
And Jana?
Yes.
Sam Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, and David?
Yes.
And Corinne?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Great seeing everyone.
I, I appreciate, I'm sorry, go ahead. You, you, you're right. Member Elkins, I believe, has a process question. And I
Do we need to close the planning board portion of the meeting? Do we need to vote and adjourn it, that portion of it?
I think that would be appropriate.
Well, then I would move to adjourn the planning board portion of this joint meeting.
I second.
Thank you, Jana. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? To keep this part of the meeting going? No. Okay, we'll go through that voice vote again. Marissa?
Yes, please.
And Melissa?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chris?
Yes.
And David Whitehill? Yes, okay, Sam Taylor.
Yes.
All right, who else? Chris?
Yes, again, twice.
Thank you. Jana? The names, all the names have disappeared from our Hollywood squares, at least on my screen. And the chair votes yes also. So it's unanimous. We are adjourning.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate you doing this. Take care.
Thank you, Carolyn. Bye bye.
Nothing personal, but I'm gonna go.
Go for it. Okay. So, Council Sherri, are you able to communicate or are you just stuck there on mute?
I think so. You all can hear me.
Oh, yeah.
It did, the same thing that happened at council last time happened again, where suddenly I couldn't do anything. And all the things, all the boxes started going blank. And then everything ended, so.
I understand there's water in the pipes.
It's moving this way down State Street.
Kind of skipped over me, oddly enough, which is a little weird. I'm terrified. So if I blank out, you know what happened? Just, I'm not having a stroke. It's just the water. So we, we also have, now we have two items to address here now.
I can't even get out. I'm so upset. What?
There we go.
I, I just muted that person who might be having the same problem I was having.
They can't get out and they're very upset about something.
It's, it's very odd. You do get like trapped and I, you have to, I had to force quit my computer.
Yep, happened to me twice.
Would it be helpful if I put the person in the waiting room? I guess.
I, I don't know. I mean, they may be attending for the legislative matters. I don't want to, I don't want to presume. So so we have two items now before, actually, we have three items. First item is minutes. As Laura said, we have the minutes from June 14th, 2021. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay, Council Sherri made the motion. Council Thorpe seconded. Discussion about the minutes. It was a while ago. Back in June. Which was the last time we convened. No discussion. Laura, please call the roll for acceptance.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Sherri.
Yes.
Council Maori.
Yes.
And Council Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay. So why don't we slip back to item number five, which is after, well, the item that's on the item number five relative to a recommendation. This is to, I would accept the motion on a recommendation or not on Chapter 48, Section 5. No, I'm sorry, that's not it again. I just did what Mr. Elkins did. About the proposed zoning changes appeal for Chapel Street.
Move a positive recommendation.
Okay.
Council Maori second. Discussion on the recommendation. Okay, Laura, please call the roll on favorable recommendation.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Sherri.
Yes.
Council Maori.
Yes.
And Council Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, that's done. And now the other item is relatively perfunctory. And in fact, I'll even read it just for purposes of for people following along. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Markowitz. Be it ordained by the City Council, the City of North Hampton. The City Council assembled as follows. That Section 5-5 of the Code of Ordinance of the City in North Hampton, Massachusetts be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Under compensation of elected officials, compensation, we will be deleting the city clerk from that designation. And also, and that's in A, and then B, benefits and expenses, we will also be deleting city clerk. And also changing and removing, this is something from, from Charter Review Discussion, removing the also known as Superintendent of Smith Agricultural School. And so accept a motion, put this on the floor and then we can have a, we can talk about it.
Move a positive recommendation.
I can. Second, and second by Council Thorpe. Okay. Just so you know, that, that we all know about the city clerk. And if anyone has any questions, spend on that. But the city clerk is no longer an elective position thereby. It's not compensated as such and will be going on, probably thankfully, on a more structured salary system as per the criteria of HR here at the city, as opposed to the whims of the City Council when they decide to raise elected officials salaries, which is rare and infrequent. The elimination, also known as Superintendent Smith Agricultural School, the, the trustees have been called alternately historically for at least the last four decades as superintendents or trustees. Thus creating certain challenges because they also have a superintendent. So it, it made things a little confusing. And that was one of the cleanup recommendations in the charter changes that were approved by the legislature and signed by the governor. And that we just delete all references, all references of superintendent when it was, when the intent was to suggest trustees. And they are hereby, from this point on, subject to, to be called by as trustees and nothing else. The, the problem is, we also, as we go through all the various orders and so on, and the charter, there's still little cleanup parts. So that's just to simply to sign off and approve on, approve that removal. Any other questions or discussion about? Well, Laura, you know what to do.
You're muted, Laura.
You almost know what to do. There you go.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Sherri.
Yes.
Council Maori.
Yes.
And Council Thorpe.
Yes.
All right, that proceeds to the Council of Favorable Recommendation as well. We have no other business before us. Except one last item, for those of you inclined, I'd wait to hear.
Move to adjourn.
There we go. Motion to adjourn by Council Maori, seconded by Council Sherri. There is no discussion despite George's thoughts of a motion to adjourn. So Laura, please do the honors.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Sherri.
Yes.
Council Maori.
Yes.
And Council Thorpe.
Yes.
We are adjourned. I'm really grateful for you guys showing up and I appreciate it, even though it felt slightly redundant. Okay, thanks so much.
Short meeting, yes.
Go for it. Take care. Bye.